We will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall is absent but will be joining us for executive session later this evening.
All right, thank you. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. All right, at this time we have our call to the public. Call to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that that matter be placed on a future agenda. However, members of council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless those matters are properly noticed for discussion in legal action. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public. Item 6A is our presentation celebrating Laura Carter's retirement on November 30th, 2018, after 20 years of service. The day has come, almost. So Laura has given over 20 years of service to the town of Florence, and much more than that to people personally. On behalf of myself, I want to say thank you for all that you've done for the community and in the community. I don't think you can go anywhere without anybody knowing who you are, or how you've personally touched their lives. So for that, I want to say thank you. To go into the details, we have invited some guests that would like to speak for a few moments.
Okay. I don't think I could do that. You're tough. I just want to say I've had the pleasure of working with Laura for the last four and a half years, which isn't nearly as long as I would have liked to after getting to know her and working closely with her. She has touched so many different people in the community. She has a big heart, and you can see it every day when you go over to the senior center. And again, she's had such an impact on me in such a short amount of time, and I'm glad I got to work with her and get to know her as a person. But I did want to take a moment to let Tanya and Rhonda, who've worked with her the longest, kind of say a few words. So who wants to start?
Wow, we joked about this for the last 14 years, and now here it is. We just want to say thank you. Thank you for everything that you've done for us. You've changed the world because you've touched so many lives. And, um, don't look at me then. We want to say thank you. We love you. And we're not complete without you. There's going to be a big hole, but you've trained us well, and we'll do our best.
I am not good at this. But we will not be the same without Laura there. She's been amazing. She says she will be there for us after she retires, but we...
Are you going to dial?
She is. She's been, she has touched a lot of hearts, a lot of people, and I just think she's truly going to be missed. And we love you.
We wish you lots of fun.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, here's the hard part. It happened fast. Twenty years went by really, really fast. It's been an awesome job, very rewarding. Brian's an awesome boss. He helps you along the way. His hair's going to go gray, or I made it go gray, but great staff, great crew. Somebody dropped the ball, somebody picked it up. Great 20 years, and I'm looking forward to those 20 years.
She almost, she almost made it. Well...
Are you guys looking forward to spending more time with Grandma?
Well, it is, we do have a little plaque for you here, and it really isn't enough to show our gratitude for all the time that you've put in. And it's really nice that your whole family could be here to be with you tonight. So we'd like to give you this and invite all of them to come up for a photograph with you, too.
Thank you.
All right, you ready? All right, one, two, three, and we'll do one more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you guys got to go take her out to dinner. All right, item 6B is the presentation of the fiscal year 2018 and '19 first quarter results and the forecast for the remainder of the year. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, and council members. It's difficult to follow that presentation. My information is pretty dull, just numbers. What I'd like to do is go through the information for this first quarter, both our expense results and our revenue results for the first quarter, and then kind of talk about my assumptions for this next, for the rest of the fiscal year. Overview, as you're aware, this information is based upon data as of September 30th, 2018. As I did last year, I'm focusing my general fund revenue assumptions on these specific seven revenue sources. These seven revenue sources make up 80% of the general fund revenue. This is the general fund revenue. As you can see, the first quarter results are listed for fiscal year 17, '18. Then we have the budget for this year, and then the first quarter results for fiscal year 18, '19, and then my forecast based upon what we've collected so far. And on the far right, I show you whether it's up or down over last fiscal year. As you'll notice, city food tax, the forecast for this year is not $30,000, but it's actually $300,000. It should be an extra zero there. Council members, do you have any questions about this slide?
No.
Okay, next one is general fund expenses. Again, the same layout. First, we have the fund, then we have the first quarter of last fiscal year, the budget for this fiscal year, the first quarter results for this fiscal year, the forecast, and then how we compare to last fiscal year. Next one we have is, these are the other funds. Now, I just focused on the major revenue sources for these other funds. We have over 20 different funds. I didn't want to throw them all up on the PowerPoint presentation because they would be small print and be hard to read, so I focused on our main, our critical pieces. So again, the same layout. These are the results so far for the revenue and my forecast for the rest of the year. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Joe.
Yes.
The water fund and the sewer fund, both are up. The forecast is up.
Well, there'd be, there's a couple of reasons. One of them is we're coming at the end of the summer season. People are consuming more water during the summer than they do in the winter, and so it's a little bit higher than we see if we spread out the average over the whole year. The other reason is because of the rate increase. Now, there was a modest rate increase this year. I was not exactly sure how it was going to impact our budget, because sometimes we see, or frequently we see, if the rates increase, people will also reduce their consumption. And so it wasn't easy to pinpoint, oh, we know if we raise rates by 3%, that we're going to have 3% more revenue. And so based upon what I'm seeing, I'm anticipating a little bit higher collections in the sewer fund than we originally budgeted.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to the other funds and the expenses in those other funds. And if there are no questions, I'm going to move on. Okay, any questions on the question slide? All right, got a few interactions there from the council. Okay. If there are another, no further items, what I'm going to do is, in late January, if not early February, I will come back and I will present to you the six-month results. Those are a much better indicator for us as to how our revenue is going to do for the rest of the year. I have received a report from the state that they are seeing an increase in the sales tax at the state level. Is that trickling down to us exactly? No, because their numbers are much larger than our numbers. We are seeing an uptick in the amount of sales tax. We are seeing more building permits coming through. So we are seeing those positive signs, but it's still too early for me to say, hey, we're going to collect a whole lot more revenue than we anticipated. Once I get the six months, I'll have a much better indication.
All right, Joe, thank you so much for presenting that information. You did a great job.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, we are now in the Board of Adjustments for a public hearing on the Burger King application to receive citizens' comments on an application received from Ms. Angie Shiv of AD Florence Investment LLC for a sign variance for Burger King to allow an electric, oh, no, I apologize, electronic media center on the new replacement monument sign, Mr. Larry Harmer.
Chairwoman Walter, I believe we're supposed to be sworn in. I'm just waiting for that action.
Yes, sir.
Please raise your right hand.
Did you need us to do that as well? Okay. For some reason, I got that indication otherwise.
Now, this will be, for the most of you, the first introduction to action as a Board of Adjustment. So it is a quasi-judicial hearing, so we are sworn in. This testimony is on the record as such. Should, depending on the nature of your action tonight, should it be appealed, it goes directly to Superior Court. It does not appel it back to the town council. So that is the reason for swearing in and the adjournment to the Board of Adjustment. I will be giving you a brief presentation, and the owner's applicant is here with me should you have any particular questions, additional testimony, or cross-examination of either one of us. The application is BOA 18-01. The site is located on the bend from 287 to the downtown Main Street, that transition curve. It is outlined in red on the map. You can see the juxtaposition of the site as it relates to adjacent properties and active of a right-of-way. This is the last element of a significant, major update to that particular facility. If you have not been in it in the last few months, it is in basically state-of-the-art compliance right now for all of the new Burger Kings being built, including interior ports and charging stations and sofa lounge areas and different things like that. This would be the last step in that process. The technical term for what we're discussing tonight is an electronic message center, although the only industry that really uses that term is the industry who makes them. We usually recall electronic reader panel, very similar to the old types of reader panels where you would change individual letters. Now they are electronic. Again, a close-up of the site, and I've marked down in this location where the existing sign sits on the property. Basically, we're looking at a variance from Section 150, 117, reader panels of the Town of Florence Code of Ordinances under the Development Code, where it's very specific as to the types of uses that have access to that type of message unit. Also, in addition, there are limitations to the size, the height, et cetera. So this is a variance that encompasses both of those sections, and I'll get into more detail as I go through my testimony. Currently, there are three such units on similar types of restaurants in the town. In, back in between 2004 and 2009, separate actions, a variance was granted for McDonald's Restaurant for a sign that exceeds the height of our current code. It included a reader panel of a different sort. In 2009, staff interpreted that the variance, as it was presented and approved, allowed for the installation of an electronic reader panel at that time. Around 2008, the Sonic Restaurant across the street went through a design review, and at that time, they were able to interpret that part of the monument signage for that would include an electronic message panel, although I'm not finding in our files or records how they used, how they rationalized doing that based on our current code. And then in 2015, '16, there was a staff-declared moratorium on sign enforcement. It was based on putting the sign code at that time on hold pending modifications and upgrades and updates to that code based on the Supreme Court ruling that went through for the town of Gilbert regarding signage and the rights of way. During that moratorium, staff approved a similar type of electronic reader panel or message center. State statute delineates basic requirements for granting a variance by a misvalued and how it's handled. This includes specific findings that must be addressed by the Board. Finding number one, and I will read these just to make sure it's on the record correctly. "There are special circumstances or conditions applying to the land, building, or use referred to in the application which do not apply to other properties in the district." This is in a B2 business district, and by the physical location of the site, it's a very irregular site. It's on a curve. It has limited access and limited visibility already existing on that particular site, all of which are fairly unique circumstances that very few, if any, other properties in the town experience. "Special circumstances were not created by the owner or applicant." Again, the site existed. It was a single parcel. It has not been subdivided or combined with other parcels to create this particular configuration. It's an individual site, and by its physical nature is unusual. Number three, "The condition or situation of the specific piece of property for which the variance is sought is not of so typical or recurrent a nature as to make reasonably practicable the formulation of a general regulation for conditions of situations." This particular one is a little trickier in that should there be something that we would expect on a reoccurring basis, the Board has the option to delay this for 30 days in order for staff to bring forward a code amendment that would address the situation. What is impractical about that is that 30 days is not enough time to draft an ordinance, take it through the required public hearings, notification, citizen participation, et cetera, and back to the Board of Adjustment in less than 30 days. It's just, calendar-wise, does not work. That being said, it is part of a sign code amendment that is in process, and it should be in front of the town council for action sometime in February or March of next year. Number four, "The authorizing of the variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property rights." The argument in this case is, again, has to do with competition. The three major competitors to this particular business have this function on their site, and it would seem like it would be a little unjustified not to allow this particular business to have similar rights. And five, "The authorizing of the application will not be materially detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity to adjacent property, the neighborhood, or the public welfare in general." And the easiest way to demonstrate that is to go back to the site, and again, by its nature, the sign would be located in this very southernmost corner. Therefore, the Florence Unified School District property to the northwest, the LDS Church property immediately to the north, would not be overly impacted by this in any way. And then we have significant right-of-way which separates this sign from any adjacent neighborhoods. Currently, the sign on site, just for a matter of reference, is 36 feet tall, has four signed faces, one facing east and west, and the ones facing north and south, as well as a standard reader panel located here. What is being proposed for the site, and based on other requirements that we are putting into effect in the Development Code, it will be reduced in half. It'll have a monument base very similar to that application that's around the building itself, and then the electronic message center is located in this location. Our community development staff has reviewed the complete application. It concurs with the applicant's response to all the findings which are contained within your report, and the application for a variance has been properly noticed, and the site posted in compliance with Section 150.009, variances of the Town of Florence Development Code. With that, I conclude my testimony, and I am here for any additional questions the Board may have, and the applicant's representative, Vince Acosta, from Royal Signs, is also here.
All right, thank you. Are there any members of our Board that have questions regarding this item? Okay, since this is a public hearing, is there any members from the public that have any questions regarding this item? Okay, I feel that you presented the information very well and in a concise manner. Is there anything that you would like to say, sir?
No, sir. No, ma'am. I think Larry covered it very well, and we appreciate the business opportunity that we've had here in Florence and look forward to that long-term relationship with the community.
All right. Mr. Harmer, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I have no further remarks. Thank you very much.
Okay, I am going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item B is the discussion impossible action on authorizing the variance on an application received from Angie Shiv of AD Florence Investment LLC for a sign variance for the Burger King to allow an electronic message center on the new replacement monument sign. You know, I'm glad that you're here and that this is being presented to us today, as it was mentioned in the presentation, where one, or your other three competitors already have this. And, you know, we're moving into that 21st century, and I am glad that you've done the improvements. A lot of the residents, especially your high school students that frequent the establishment, really appreciate all of the changes that you have brought forward in that establishment, so...
Good day, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no other comments, with that, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing a variance on an application received from Angie Shiv of AD Florence Investment LLC for a sign variance for Burger King to allow an electronic message center on the new replacement monument sign. You know, I'm glad that you're here and that this is being presented to us today, as it was mentioned in the presentation, where one, or your other three competitors already have this. And, you know, we're moving into that 21st century, and I am glad that you've done the improvements. A lot of the residents, especially your high school students that frequent the establishment, really appreciate all of the changes that you have brought forward in that establishment, so...
Good day, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no other comments, with that, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing a variance on an application received from Angie Shiv of AD Florence Investment LLC for a sign variance for the Burger King to allow an electronic message center on the new replacement monument sign. You know, I'm glad that you're here and that this is being presented to us today, as it was mentioned in the presentation, where one, or your other three competitors already have this. And, you know, we're moving into that 21st century, and I am glad that you've done the improvements. A lot of the residents, especially your high school students that frequent the establishment, really appreciate all of the changes that you have brought forward in that establishment, so...
Good day, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's no other comments, with that, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion authorizing a variance on an application received from Angie Shiv of AD Florence Investment LLC for a sign variance for Burger King to allow an electronic message center on the new replacement monument sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from Board, from the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of the intergovernmental agreement with the Florence IDA for use of the Suter House. Item B is approval of non-exclusive license agreement with the North Arizona National Guard. Item C is the authorization to increase the not-to-exceed amount for the Fester and Chapman's annual audit services by 4,500, from 41,150 to 45,650. Item D is approval of the upfit of three police interceptors by Motorola Solutions in an amount not to exceed $47,200. Item E is approval of the October 1st and the October 15th, 2018, town council meeting minutes. And item F is to receive and file the following boards and commission meeting minutes, which is the August 29th, 2018 Historic District Advisory Commission minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, that is your consent agenda. Is there any member of the public or council that would like any item removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. And the motion carries. Under new business, we have item A, which is Resolution Number 1684-18. This is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinau County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 35B, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Mayor, Council, good evening. First of all, I'd like to orient you with the site itself. On the overhead, it's located, or on the west side of Hunt Highway, just to start focusing in. It's immediately north and east of 35A, which you approved several weeks ago. It is directly across from American Way in that intersection. It consists of 57 lots total. Close-up gives you a little bit more detail on the site, and also shows the two points of access as typically required in any final plat that accesses a property. This property, or this particular plat, was approved preliminarily by the planning commission at the same time as 35A that you've seen previously. Again, from an aerial standpoint, it gives you an idea of where this is generally located. You can see there was some already, some grading on the site, so you can see where the street system would go through. It has 57 total single-family lots encompassing approximately 17.66 acres at a density of 3.22 dwelling units per acre. This brings the totals for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, including this particular plat, to 3,767 single-family lots at approximately 1,213 and a half developed acres, and gives us an overall density of 3.10 dwelling units per acre, which is well below the maximum density that's allowed for all of Merrill Ranch. That's the summary of the staff presentation. If you have any particular questions. Also, this will be part of the D.R. Horton portion of Merrill Ranch. We have a representative of D.R. Horton here, and we have the applicant engineer who's prepared the drawings, if you have any questions for them.
I do just have one question. If you can go one slide back, and I'm sure, one more. There we go. If you were looking at 19, 18, and 17, I just, well, actually, 22 to 17, I just want to make sure that there's enough room for them to park in the driveway and not go over onto the sidewalk.
You mean along the, along the Wrigley Drive?
Yes, that is it.
Yeah, the lot depth is, definitely meets minimum standards for lot depth.
Okay.
And it also will, I'm sure, that the particular models of homes assigned for each of the lots based on their size and what it would be able to fit on the lots.
Perfect.
They still have to meet the requirement, though, for the depth of the driveway on every case.
Excellent. That was my only question. Otherwise, it was very well put together. Any other questions? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1684-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 35B, and authorizing execution by the Town Manager of supporting documents.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and we're appreciative that you're here and building in our town, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Item B is our discussion approval, disapproval of a professional services agreement with Green Play LLC for the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, an on-site-specific master plan in an amount not to exceed $241,969. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor Walter, council members, tonight before you is the consideration of the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan and site-specific master plans. Back in August, we issued a request for qualifications, and we received three statements of qualifications from consulting teams. Based on interviews and reviewing the materials that were submitted, Green Play, a firm based in Colorado that specializes in parks and recreation planning, emerged as the most qualified team. Their team includes J2 Engineering Environmental Design, which did the original master plan 10 years ago, and is currently working with the town on the Post and Butte project, so we have some familiarity with them. Another member of their team is the Matrix Design Group, which will help with the inventory, level of service analysis, and community input facilitation. And lastly, RRC Associates will help with the statistically valid community surveys, so we have an idea of what the community needs as far as parks, facilities, programs, and special events. Because there's so much going on with, with the surveys and the public meetings, updates of the site-specific master plans is a perfect timing. We're going to be getting the input that we need to review how they're being used, how we might be able to upgrade them, and also look at their current conditions to see what might need to be updated just because of years of infrastructure kind of declining, so. And then the other thing they would give us is feedback and analysis as far as cost estimates, so that any future improvements on existing facilities could be included in our capital improvement plan. So the timeline in the proposal from Green Play calls for everything to be completed by July of next year, which kind of fits along with our timeline for the general plan update. Staff estimated that the cost of the project would be anywhere between $275,000 to $300,000. The final proposal before you is approximately $242,000, so we're under budget from what we had projected. And there was $350,000 budget in this year's budget, leaving significant funding available to get going on other parts of the general plan. I do want to remind you that the parks and open spaces required component of the general plan update, so we'll be getting kind of a head start on that with this process. So with that, staff's recommending approval of the agreement in the amount not to exceed with Green Play, and their consulting team are happy to answer any questions.
All right, any council members have any questions?
No.
Any members of the public? All right. Again, you've kept us well informed. You've put on a great presentation for the public. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the professional services agreement with Green Play LLC for the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan and site-specific master plans in the amount not to exceed $241,969.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Managers' report. Do you have a managers' report?
I do. I've got a few brief items I'm going to run through real quick. First off, did everybody get to see our new 14-passenger van out front? 5310 grant for the senior center and a 5310 program?
And I actually had the amazing opportunity this weekend of meeting the lovely lady that's coordinating some of the drivers.
Great. Well, if you want to look at it, I'm sure that these ladies can make it available after the meeting for, for folks to check that out. Secondarily, I wanted to remind everybody that Thursday, November 29th, at 4:00 p.m. will be the unveiling of the reconditioned 1953 fire truck, as well as some other surprises that I'm not going to reveal, but there's, there's more surprises, so make sure that you make it to that event. Secondarily, some fantastic news. We just found out today that we have been awarded $331,031 in CDBG funds for our Phase 3 water line extension project, so congratulations for that. And lastly, I wanted to bring to those folks on TV and the folks in audience attention that Thursday, December 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. will be the Pinal County Economic Development Forum, and that's at Robeson Ranch in Eloy. So you have to RSVP for that event, so you have to call Joe Pirates at Pinal County, 520-868-6226. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
That's Thursday, December 6th, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Thursday, December 6th, 8:00 a.m.
Perfect. For some reason, I heard Friday in my head, and I was thinking, that's the same day as our parade.
You said we had to call Joe. I sent an email back. Should, should I call? Okay, okay.
All right, well, thank you for your report. Call to the public. This is our second call to the public. Is there anybody who would like to speak at this time? Ladies, I'm so excited about that van. Thank you so much, all your hard work for the community. That's pretty cool, all the features that it has. And am I correct in understanding that we can have people that are trained to drive it in the community, so if somebody needs wheelchair assistance, then that's, that's readily accessible, so thank you. All right, closing call to the public, and this is our call to the council for current events only. All right, Councilmember Larson.
I don't really have anything to add. I just want to wish everybody a happy early Thanksgiving, and I hope that people will join us for Junior Parade. Have a great, happy holiday.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, we had a couple of things this past week. The Pinal County Historical Society had their Waterways meeting, I guess it was Wednesday, maybe, and it was quite educational, right, Judy? The speakers were just outstanding. We learned a lot about the history of our canals and what's going on in our water systems here in, in Pinal County. So that was, that was a good meeting. Then the Arts and Culture Committee had a, a art show Friday and Saturday of the Pedro Guerrero's works, and if you're not familiar with Pedro, he was the photographer for Frank Lloyd Wright. And if you haven't seen his work, it's, it's, it's really beautiful. See, these pictures that he did in black and white, we're so used to see everything done in color and on our iPhones and all this stuff, and you go look at some of his pictures, and it's, they just take your breath away. They're so beautiful. So that was a, I want to thank the Arts and Culture Committee for the work that they did. One last thing, I'm always so proud of our Parks and Recs Department and stuff that they do, and I read Ally's report in the paper this past week, and I'm sorry that she left because I wanted to compliment her on her article in the papers. So pass that on to her. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hopkins?
Well, I'd just like to let, hope everybody shows up for the parade Saturday. Looks like it's supposed to be good weather, from what they're saying, a little on the cool side, but that's light jacket, it'd be fine probably, but, yeah, it's, some years in the past, you know, we've had to deal with rain and wind, and we've been pretty lucky. Last year, we were pretty lucky, and I think we're going to be lucky this year on it. I hope everybody shows up for the parade and, and attends the rodeo also. If you've never been out there, it's quite a, quite a show. Anyway, and I want to wish everybody a good Thanksgiving. Thank you, and that's it. That's all I got.
Vice Mayor Will Rich?
I don't really have anything else to add. I'll also wish everybody a very blessed and happy Thanksgiving.
All right. So I want to say thank you. We have had a lot of volunteer opportunities over the past month. Most recently, we had the community center opened up this past weekend. We made some sock puppets with the United Way that are going into some literacy kits that will be distributed throughout the community. On October 27th, here's some good news. Remember when we had the Make a Difference Day? We said that 5,000 meals were going to be located, or not located, donated locally. We ended up having so many volunteers at that event that we actually made 10,000 meals. 5,000 will be donated here locally, and the other 5,000 will go in the surrounding communities. So I want to say thank you for, you know, those partnerships that have been built over the past few months, years. And I do want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving as well. If you are a family that, you know, you are in need of food, we do have some local food banks and churches that have, you know, offered resources, so send me an email. I can put you in touch with the people, and I just want to make sure everybody has an amazing Thanksgiving. With that, we are going to adjourn to an executive session at this time. Yes, sir?
Is this Councilmember Boyer's last meeting?
No, sir.
No?
Nope. December 3rd. We are going to have an amazing celebration of our incoming and our outgoing council members, and so I hope everybody can attend on December 3rd. We are going to start with a meet and greet at 5:00 in the lobby, so I'm glad that you brought that up. That was great timing.
I didn't want to miss out on that.
No, no, sir. All right, with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.